Oh, you should be.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
What?
I'm practising my mantra.
Oh, okay.
Right. Right, and any apologies first of all?
We have apologies from councillor Alvin, who has another commitment, councillor Linda Piper, who are unwell, and councillor Araguda Ramadan.
All right, and nothing from...
George.
What's with that?
Jane.
Barbara. Jane's coming, isn't she? Um, declarations of interest. It's all right. I know you've got an Addington Street.
It's my building, so.
Yes, I know.
You'll want to come and say hello.
Say yeah, we need...
Okay, no further declarations of interest now at the minutes of the last meeting. Would...
No, I just made a declaration of interest, didn't I?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry?
Actually, yes. It's time.
Um, any objections to those? Is anybody happy with them?
No. Can we just let those go? I can't comment.
I will propose them any second, yes? Yes, Jane? Oh, Tricia. Um, any objections to agreeing those minutes? No. And let's say those in... All those in favour, all right then, come on. I've got to do it properly. Right. Okay, Dean, we need to look at the planning application before we start. I will summon to a meeting of... Who were they? People who look at the conservation area. Um, and they go through all the planning applications in the conservation area and they send us notes.
The Heritage and Design Forum.
Yes, probably. And, um, they're usually a bit too late for our meeting, but they're trying to do it in time. So I've called in most of those having sat through their meeting. So the first one is Cliff Street.
Rob, spoken feedback is ready.
Oh, no, sorry.
We have an extra person in the meeting.
Uh, Cliff Street, I've called in and councillor Wynn has called in. Overdeveloped HMO. Lack of amenities, parking, rubbish storage, etcetera in the conservation area. It's not actually, um, produced any more bedrooms than it has already. Um, it's HMOs, which I know we all hate. They're two flats. So the ground floor has kitchen, living room, bedroom. No rubbish storage and then up. So the application really is to change the internal doors to fire doors. Um... And the, what's this, historical conservation authority. I hope they do up the building, but we can't make them do that. Um, and I'm not entirely certain what's the difference between the two applications. Are you, Dean, have you noticed?
What's between number one and two?
Yes.
One's a change of use.
Change of use.
And the other is for the doors.
For the doors. Well, one's the change of use to HMO. But I don't think it produces any more bedrooms.
So on the ground floor, that's existing, so the dining room is turning into an extra bedroom?
Yeah.
That's the only difference. The size of the internal doors.
So that's an extra bedroom plan?
An extra bedroom.
Now councillor Austin.
I did have some correspondence with the planning committee about this when it first came up. Because some of the documentation talks about that this, um, this is formalising an HMO and I said, does that mean it already is in effect? And this is just asking for retrospective action? And they would not commit themselves to the use of the word retrospective at all. They just kept saying, well, it's this, well, it's that. And I'm saying, so what is the use of the word formalising? And we ended up in a kind of English lesson rather than anything else and we didn't get anywhere. But it looks to me like what they're saying is this is already happening and what we now...
I don't see why they're so reluctant because applying in retrospect happens quite often.
Exactly, exactly. But they were not keen to say that of a reason. Maybe I had completely misunderstood, but they didn't put me right if so. They didn't say anything that changed my understanding of it.
So councillor Wynn, do you have anything?
Well, I think it's, it's on Cliff Street. I've got real concerns that there were no bin stores because we already have an issue with the barbers at the bottom of the road storing his rubbish on the street side and it spills over. But I actually think, there's no parking around there. They can keep saying sustainably all they like, but the reality is for most of them, they need a car to drive places to go to work.
Good.
Uh, I think it's overdevelopment and I'm really concerned that we approve the HMO because they've stopped the HMOs in a large part of Margate and it seems to me that we are seeing, and I asked just on planning at TDC, we are seeing too many houses of multiple occupancy appearing, appearing in Ramsgate. I mean, I can think of at least seven or eight that have gone through TDC since I was elected.
Councillor Green, sorry.
I, I, I did get into a bit of a, and I understand what Tricia, what councillor Austin, what Tricia said because there was a situation with a development in, uh, in Broadstairs that was already operating as a HMO and then we applied for a licence and it seems that that is okay to do that. Uh, uh, because I didn't get an answer to either. So I really do have concerns. Are we up to five bedrooms, Dean? Is it five bedrooms now?
I believe so.
Five bedrooms. Uh, it is a large property, but I just have concerns that we're going to end up with, uh...
Or five bedrooms.
We're going to end up, we're sending developers the message that it's okay to come to Ramsgate and run a HMO because, uh, because so many are being approved.
Oh, right. Councillor Green.
This is exactly what we said would happen when they stopped to approve for HMOs.
Yeah.
We said it would impact not only on the parts of Margate, but particularly on these Ramsgate wards. And I think the, the change of plan from the previous one to adding the extra bedroom, an extra stress on the area. Particularly with no provision for, um, rubbish is just a step too far. We've overdeveloped.
I'm personally not sure there is an extra bedroom.
Well, I think using the lounge has been done to them.
They've converted the lounge into a bedroom.
They could, couldn't they, but...
You've got the dining room, that's existing and then they're turning it into a...
Yeah, turn it into a bedroom.
So they turned the dining room into a bedroom. The other thing is, um, we can't complain that they don't provide car parking in...
No, but we can complain they don't sort out the waste, can't we?
Yes. Yes, sorry, um, sorry, have you finished?
Yes.
No, I was going to say, is there not in the local plan a general presumption against HMOs? Is there not a general, uh, I'm sure I've read something somewhere. Have I made that up, David? That in general we would prefer not to have HMOs in our town centres?
They...
Well, I guess that was put in the, put in the research.
Right, okay. Okay, I thought I'd read it, but maybe I'm...
Apparently there is an officer that deals with them.
Yeah, there is.
Yes.
And, um, you can't have many within a certain distance. And they say in their statement...
If it's more than two stories, then there's definitely a presumption against.
Oh, maybe that's what it is.
Um, so in their statement, they say that, um, there isn't another one nearby which complies with the rules as they are at the moment. I know we don't like them. Um, did somebody else?
I did, Pat, but actually Tricia's pretty much said what I have and I've got quite strong views about it.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Well, as I say, this longer the future, but can we ask TDC for guidance on how that the heritage actions, the heritage statement that's come out fits in with stuff like HMOs? Because we've got a document that was, you know, that is meant to give us some sort of powers uh, because it's an important document that Cabinet has approved. Uh, so now we need to see how that, how that document positively impacts in our conservation area. Uh, and one of the things that we should be restricting is HMOs as a consequence.
Why?
Because there's too much pressure in the town centre. There's too much pressure. Waste, parking. And I disagree that we, I think we can challenge the situation with car parking if you, if you apply some of the information that you see in the local plan. And we have to, you can't just assume that people can walk everywhere and get public transport because for every 116 people that work in Fannet, in Fannet, a hundred of them have to get in their car and work outside of Fannet. So we, you know, I'd love everybody to walk everywhere, but the reality is we can't do that. So I get fed up of people saying it's sustainable, we need to be sustainable. The reality for people is they can't be sustainable.
Well, we have to sort of stretch to the law. Um, yeah, um, car parking in Cliff Street. Round the corner is the multi-story car park. Come out at the top of Cliff Street. So not a big problem, is it?
No.
Councillor Huxley.
We have asked for a review of parking from TDC, as you know, so.
Yeah.
And councillor Crittenden is...
Any impression on?
Councillor Crittenden. Chased it, haven't you?
All I can say is that it keeps getting mentioned. So it's not action. Uh, I have emailed and I have asked who's in charge of it now because, uh, who's actually running it. But it has been mentioned in various forums, you know, meetings that we've been in. It says we are undertaking a district-wide parking review.
We haven't seen it.
But we have, I still don't know who's doing it. So it's not forgotten, but, yeah.
Well, it was agreed at full council, so they have to do something about it.
Has to happen.
They've got to do something.
Yes.
Okay, um, has anyone got a motion here? That, along the lines of, we're generally not very keen on...
I propose that we say that we feel it's overdevelopment, the addition of an extra bedroom, etcetera, is a concern.
Rubbish, etcetera.
And that we're concerned about the management of waste.
Okay, um, is there a second for that? Jane Heatherington, councillor Heatherington. Um, all those in favour? Yep, okay. Where's councillor Nixon?
Just had to take a call.
Oh, right, okay. Um, thank you, Dean. Now, 42 High Street.
We saw two applications on the front. We're just like, this is all... We have a motion on this, which is for the internal doors.
Yeah. Um, we didn't talk about the second part, which is the internal doors. I propose we have no permission on that. Is anyone second that? All those in favour?
Yeah, they were having fireworks, weren't they?
Yeah, they'll need fire doors, yes.
Don't want to finish them out, so.
Um, they do in their application say that they are considering the design of the doors. Right. So for High Street, this one's a nightmare. No? 42298. Right.
We've made your comment before.
Yeah, we had this on before in January, when we recognised it as that.
Oh, sorry, that one, yeah, it's the other.
So, um, basically they bought it back. The original one was agreed at four number one bed and one number two bed and they're bringing it back for two numbers one bed and two number two. So they're downscaling the one bed and not giving it to two beds. So, oops. The main floor is staying the same with the walkway. They have removed one bin store just consistently, downscale to the flats. So this is the first floor. So this is what we had before and it's actually the flat one that they're changing. So they're actually getting rid of the hallway and pushing it out to squeeze another bedroom in on the end. And all the other floors, the second floor is the same as before.
Okay.
So the only other changes with this one here, the entrance hall, they're squeezing in another bedroom.
They're trying to get an extra bedroom in there.
What are the dimensions of those rooms? Is that, you said the one they're trying to squeeze in?
Eleven square metres and that one's nine and a half square metres.
I'd love to find out about this, but I, I think we need to ask that they check they meet national space standards?
Nine and a half square metre standards.
Yeah.
Doesn't.
Um, so I propose that we have no comment as long as the rooms meet national space standards.
And the bin store remains?
Um, no, they've added the bin store. I guess the...
Take one or green.
Yeah.
Do we know what they're planning to do with the fabric outside? Because it's in the conservation area, it's a mess.
Is it?
They all... Alterations to fenestration, including Juliette balconies, it says, but it doesn't say anything.
Back.
Well, and the front.
At the front.
Do very much with the...
Juliette balconies at the back.
So this is, it is existing on the left and on the, uh, and then this is proposed. So there's been no change. They, they keep the style of the front.
Okay.
And it would be hoped that they would prefer to share it.
Yeah, that's not displeasing.
Obviously, yeah.
Yes, councillor Wynn.
I did, one bin store is being removed, so we've got four houses using one bin store. Is that correct, Dean?
Uh, you've got...
And that high street is a nightmare.
Then there was three here, so there was, uh, three, uh, three 1,100 litre bin stores and they've taken one out. So there's two.
It's 1,100, are those the big ones? Are those the big, the...
The ton ones, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the commercial ones.
They shouldn't need to be commercial ones, do they? Because these are domestic properties.
No, but I'm talking about they're the commercial size, the end of the...
Size.
Rather than the little wheelie bins.
Yeah, yeah, I understand what you're talking about. Um...
So why have they taken one out? There's another room.
No, two were allocated because they've removed, uh, they reduced, uh, from four one bed to two one bed and they've increased by one, two beds. So they've, I guess that they accounted for the reduction of the flats, but...
I should object for removing the bin.
Councillor Moore.
So they've gone from five flats to...
Councillor Moore. Sorry, I've got a handout.
Yeah.
I'm trying to be... I think the reason for calling it in was overdevelopment in the conservation area. I agree with that. I don't think it should go back as no comment. Right, so what's we want to say? I think we should say...
I mean, there are already people living in these.
Well, it's, it's time to do something about it. And I know we're only Ramsgate Town Council and we don't have the last word on it, but I really think we should push for things like this. Why should we agree on something? It goes to TDC and they overturn it. They don't live here, we do.
Well, some of them do, some of us do, some of them...
Aren't you on the planning committee?
I'm on the planning committee, yeah, but I, I sort of agree with Pat. We have to say, if we disagree with something, even if it's written down on paper, our residents can see at least we tried to do something, even if it's turned over by TDC. As I sit here now, I'm actually RTC, not TDC, but, you know, it's likely that whatever we say, it will probably be rejected anyway. Uh, but I do think the process, if we've got concerns and Pat's got concerns about overdevelopment, we've got concerns about the bin storage, then we need to make sure that there's an evidence of that.
Yeah. I'm, um, I'm concerned about the size of some of the rooms.
Yes.
Um, which I would, um, like to include in our comments.
Yeah. Nine square metres.
Um...
Is nine square metres three times three? Three times three is nine, three metres.
Pretty small, it must be really small bedrooms.
No, it's bigger than that.
No, that's amazing, I'm saying that's like a metre.
Yeah. That size, three times three, so, yes. Not that big. But that small, when, that small bedroom in the top corner looks as if they've shown a double bed, but I wouldn't have thought there is room for a double bed.
Yeah, probably not.
A double bed and just to squeeze out at the side.
Yeah.
You'd have a metre at the end of a double bed, wouldn't you? You'd have a metre spare. A, a double bed's two metres long, isn't it?
Wow, yeah, I'm annoyed in. Yes, councillor Green.
Well, the thing is, they have a perfectly good planning permission. And now they're doing what they're developing to do squeezing it.
Yes.
And I think we should object, I think.
Yeah, okay.
That they're rejecting what they've already got is overdevelopment. What the reason you say, we're doing room sizes.
I don't know.
And I think the removal of the bin.
Yeah. Right, so we will say we object to them altering their original planning condition.
Yeah.
On the basis that their room sizes are inadequate and the bin, a bin store has been removed.
Yeah, in an area which has problems with waste management.
I don't know whether it does then, does it? Anyway, um, that's what I propose. Is there a second for that? Councillor Heatherington, all those in favour? Anyone against or abstaining, councillor Green?
I'm in favour.
You're abstaining, councillor?
No, I'm in favour.
You're in favour, okay.
I'm reading the next one.
You're ahead of the game, David. Okay, this three, A Rosebury Avenue, that is a joke. I shouldn't be saying this, I'm...
Why would you want to go on a gang in Rosebury Avenue?
In a builder's yard.
Oh, it's a camping camp, I see what you're talking about. I'm a God almighty, yeah.
Um, you need to put up the plant, please. It's the right way.
This is just up here, some road, um, just to figure out. Much of the office is just off the side.
All the Saints Roads.
Is that the top side?
It's the top one of the, before you get to, the Lakes Road, before you get to the...
I wondered which side of the road it was on.
Oh, no, I don't know.
It's in between these two houses with number two and three. They, they want to put a cabin at the back with an overhanging roof.
Looks like a house cabin.
Oh, yeah. Can somebody formulate some reason?
It's in the middle of a residential area.
I mean, there's a lot of, um, letters of objection talking about the access.
Yes.
Um, and overlooking. Yes, councillor Pennington.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this looks like a fairly typical Airbnb and it's very, very similar to one that my cousin stays in when she comes over from Wales, um, which is right smack in the middle of Prestige Avenue or just latches right smack in the middle of the Prestige Avenue area. It's just off Prestige Avenue. There is one just like that with a little jacuzzi out the back and everything. So I just think there is a precedent for it.
Right, and it's, uh, is it comfortable for her or?
It's, it's, it's a great big room, cabin. Um, we, a little cubbyhole that's a toilet and then it's like, like a bed set with a kitchenette and a bed. And then you go out into the outside where there's like a little patio bit and a jacuzzi, not jacuzzi, go back, one of them things away.
Hot tub.
Mm, hot tub. Uh, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it seems like a bizarre place to put it.
George, yeah.
Yes. Well, I mean, we've got the giggles about, I've got the giggles about this, but I mean, I suppose we are saying this quite often that, you know, certainly where I live in Culloden, there's like an awful lot of the properties that have turned into Airbnb, which we object to because they're non-residential any longer and only for a couple of months of the year. I suppose if this is being created specifically for the purpose of an Airbnb, um, I don't... It's odd, but, you know. Councillor Green.
It says it's for use for the holiday retreat for artists and writers.
Well. Oh, to be a holiday, I like that, David. Well observed. I'm sorry, you're a research scientist.
You're not allowed to go in.
I've got a pen. You're friendly.
That's discrimination, isn't it?
Yes.
You have to be an artist or writer to go there.
Yes, it is.
Oh, it, it...
It doesn't look particularly peaceful. Can we object to it on the basis that it is overdevelopment?
No.
In terms of the access point. Councillor Wing.
I, it's like, I mean, you look at the aerial view and it's just slap bang in the middle of a residential and it's not as if it's a property. It's not as if it's a property that suddenly become like your next door, in your case, Jane, next door is an Airbnb. It's actually being developed inside a residential area, which, and it's weird, it's just weird. The access, it's at the bottom of something.
I don't think we can say it's weird.
I mean...
It's a builder's yard, I think.
It's a builder's yard, but it's, you know, there are, I think there are residential properties that are going to be overlooking that, that right.
Councillor Huxley.
So in terms of the access, things like ambulances, uh, fire engines, I don't know if narrow the entrances.
Iffy.
Yeah. So we object on access.
Access grounds.
Access grounds.
For emergency.
We can object to a residential development in the central area.
No, I don't know.
Access for emergency.
Access for emergency.
Emergency vehicles. Yeah, can we do that? Can we propose that?
Waste collection, they've got to go down that little alley.
No, or they have to bring it out, councillor.
I'd be tempted to propose that.
You propose that, I'll second it. All those in favour? Right. You're not in favour.
I'm abstaining. Something about this, I think, is quirky, the idea. I'm only abstaining.
You're saying you should try it, councillor.
The only reason I'm abstaining is because it's...
It's too abstention. It would just maybe weird in the... Jen, alleyway, yes.
Good idea, it's protect your development, bad now.
Is it about yard development? Because I think it's already a builder's yard or something.
Effectively, it is.
I think it's somebody's...
Some land.
It's a standalone piece of land, yet they're not cutting it off somebody's garden, I don't think.
I think if it was in the garden of that house, that would be probably okay, but it's a different area of land, isn't it?
I would say, I know.
So have we objected to it?
Yes, majority of them.
Yes, and two abstentions. Okay. Oh, this is the weird one. Six High.
Six High Street.
Um, yeah, this is the Ramsgate Heritage we designed for. Um, it doesn't meet space standards. Some rooms have no windows.
No windows.
And they want putting PVC.
They want new PVC windows.
Started building.
Um...
What's not to dislike, really?
Where is this above Cafè?
Above, but it's living on the...
Above Palace.
It's on Palace, it's in the...
Yes.
With this, or I go on to the next one, they want to change these, these middle windows here to the matching system like, obviously keep the same sort of structure. So they want to go into a sash windows.
But making that sense, right, to change it, is it?
It's a bit messy. So, uh, you've got the existing, the ground floor is staying the same as, uh, retail, uh, shop and then you've got existing first floor plan, where you've got the store, these store rooms here, kitchens, these stores are the best, you can even convert that into living room, bedroom, kitchens, hallway, kitchen, bedroom and living room. So that'd be flat one. And then you've got flat two here and then vertical balance all storage and the vertical, the living room, which is two thirty.
Doesn't seem to any bin storage there, does there? Either, or bicycle storage. Um, the room side.
Yeah, there is here in the hallway.
Oh, yes, that's right. There's a sort of bit of the outside area.
Yes, the flat roof.
On the flat roof. So how are they going to get those bins downstairs, don't they?
I propose that we more or less say the same as the Heritage and Design Forum.
Yes.
That we absolutely support residential development above shops, but we're concerned about this because it doesn't meet the space standards, that there's problems about light and view, there's problems about the waste and that we don't want the PVC windows.
Don't want to change the windows. I do, I do think when we come, we have to start looking because I, I don't want plastic windows, but there are some really good, good look-alike double glazed windows. Because if you live in a heritage building, especially with spiraling fuel costs, you are stuffed really. So I definitely think we need to be encouraging builders to, to look at some of the, and they use it, they use them quite, you can't tell on a lot of European buildings when they've got sash windows that are actually not, not wooden, they're double glazed. you, you can't tell on a lot of European buildings when they've got sash windows that are actually not, not wooden, they're double glazed, so I definitely think we, we need to move that way because it is unfair to make them go back to wood.
Do need to, yeah, we need to.
We need to start thinking about these fuel bins. And they're not ground floor windows either.
What's that got to do with it?
Well, I'm a bit torn about the P, the PVC windows, if they, if they were using some of the more modern materials.
No, no, I understood that, but it's not ground floor, what's?
No, if, well, the ground floor, i- if it's, if it's on the second floor, then you're less likely to notice that wood. Uh, if they're on the ground floor, then you're, you're walking past them, so wood, wood would be.
Yes, the conservation says the windows themselves offer little in their current condition and their replacement may be acceptable, however, I would expect this to be in timber and of a more considered form.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, councillor Green?
I think if you want to change the conservation area to, to allow whatever PVC windows, that needs doing, you know, as an item.
Properly, yeah.
Not, not piecemeal like.
No, exactly.
And it's something, it's something TDC need to look out.
Well, the conservation area report as well, um, okay, so have we, we, is it, I'll second the motion, I believe Trish had put, that we follow the design forum.
Yes.
Um, can we vote on that, please? Yeah, okay. Then, our.
Favourite one.
Councillor Wing?
I, yeah, birth form five has come back and there's an extra period of, uh, until, I think it's, uh, April the twenty first. I had to ask, uh, Ian Livingstone what the amendment was, and the amendment was, uh, a, 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 and a further noise and vibration documentation. The only difference I could see in it was there was now consideration of the conveyor, which worries me slightly, because the conveyor is, a, needs to be a separate planning application by whoever's, it's going to be Brett's that put the conveyor on and that needs to go to KCC, so I just have concerns that I don't understand why there is now an assessment of the conveyor, and Brett's did the assessment of the noise and vibration of the conveyor, uh, down at the port, but we don't actually have a conveyor there. Uh, it, the, the nearest property is three hundred and seventy five metres away, uh, and that is, it's great that we finally see that figure, because when the Cement Bachelor arrived, the documentation that was produced said there are no problems within one thousand metres. Uh, so I just have a little concern, I don't understand why we're now, why the planning application now includes a conveyor when really it's just about the pontoons, or should just be, be about the pontoons.
Yeah.
It's about due process being followed.
Does it say about the conveyor, isn't it, anywhere?
You need to read the documentation, the new, the new, the new noise and vibration documentation that's, that's.
Councillor Huxley?
It's time to not put in an email earlier, the, uh, TDC always has to look at its own planning applications.
Yes.
And every local authority in the country does that, KCC would do the same, so that's not a, that's not wrong. It's just lawful for them to do that.
Yes, no, it's, it's about the fact that the conveyor is included in this application.
I don't know.
Conveyor should be subject to.
Well, it should be.
Had something in writing saying.
Well, it should be.
Subject to a separate application.
That should go to, can count to council.
Yeah.
So I don't know why that's included, but presumably you can look at that when you're, you're, sorry, Chair.
Yeah.
You're on the planning committee at TDC.
Yeah.
Can we?
Questions, I just say, sorry, your questions you can raise at the planning committee, I don't think that is relevant to us. Councillor Wing's points.
I think the noise, uh, and impact on the homes is relevant, I think we should definitely raise that.
Um, I think we ought to work towards not having the tunnel shut during the day.
Uh huh.
And presumably that is KCC.
Yep.
Um, because that is ju- also that stuff they're doing out here as well. They're going to be sending big lorries through.
So, I mean, in my, in my opinion, the sooner we get this sorted out, better, because you'll just be sending everything by lorry.
Yes.
They're good.
Hmm.
You need to get that birth form five, what are you using, councillor Wing, in my opinion, working so you don't have stuff going by road, either this way or via the tunnels. Thanks.
Councillor Green?
This is part of KCC's minerals and waste plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's such, I think, getting a bit ahead of ourselves, like, in my opinion, KCC should consider whether expansion of this facility, and it is an expansion, is necessary for KCC's mineral and waste. And all the, um, detrimental effects would, would, would go into that decision. Uh, and so I don't think, I still think that, that this proposal is. But to KCC first.
Okay, um, councillor Hudson?
The birth form five is a TDC application for a pool owned by TDC. KCC is to do with the conveyor belt, so that's a different application.
Right.
And it's not going to be an increase in volume.
Right.
Because.
Well, this is crazy.
Because it depends on how you bring it in, if you bring it in, how many, you have to do it twenty four hours a day with boats or with, with, um, lots for it to really increase the capacity, as in increase the amount that you're getting through the volume. So that's not the plan, that's my understanding of it. They're doing it because the other berth collapsed, so they had to rebuild it under the terms of the lease of Brett's.
So leaving aside the conveyor, which they have not mentioned.
They have mentioned, they have mentioned, it's in the documentation.
But Chair, this is.
Documented.
Chair, this is a Casey's, this is a TDC thing for birth form five. KCC application is for the conveyor belt, which is a different application.
Yeah.
It's got nothing to do with TDC.
And have they put that up?
I think so, yeah.
Not, not much point having the berth if you don't put a conveyor.
Exactly, yeah, the two go together.
Together, and it's just a question of which should be first.
Councillor Austin?
Birth.
No.
Well, you can't have the conveyor without the berth.
The increased lead should come first. Is there an increased lead?
No.
Yes, there isn't.
No, there isn't.
Councillor Austin?
Can I propose that we say that we refer to our previous concerns, that in addition, we are concerned about the impact of noise on neighbouring dwellings and that we do not understand why there is reference in the documentation to the conveyor in view of the fact that this should be sub- subject to a separate application to KCC.
Right.
But it's KCC making an application to itself, my understanding is, Chair, on the actual.
We don't understand.
I agree, yes.
We can say that, if you say we don't understand.
I, I can clarify, because I'm not quite an expert on this, we have been trying to get clarification from Sha- Sharon Thompson, head of planning at KCC. She refuses to answer, or she just ignores my emails, I've now sent a further one. We have got clarification through MMO that, that, the, 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 the application TDC are putting in needs to be a full application and not a general permitted development right, because it was, uh, an environmental impact statement was scoped in, and that's come from the Marine Management Organisation, not me. We've been asking for, asking for clarification. The, the application for, for the conveyor belt, I believe, will be by Brett, so it's whoever is going to put that conveyor belt in and then Brett will need to put an application to KCC, because that's part of the, the mineral and waste documentation, a document I've also read to my, uh, to my buffoons. And it's very useful. It's, it's also a safeguarded wolf, so we can't actually get rid of that, that wolf, and we also have evidence that gravel and, and, and sand can be, can be, uh, can be offloaded into Ramsco.
Can be, though.
Using Brett's own vessel called, called Britannia Beaver, uh, and we suspect that gravel is being offloaded into that area. The ship that offloads sand presently has the capacity to offload gravel as well, so why do we need a berth? These are questions that we haven't had answered. I've also asked for a copy of the facilities agreement, because I'm constantly told, was told by Steve Albin last, councillor Albin last time, we have a responsibility to replace that berth. Has anybody ever seen any, any paperwork that tells us that?
It's in the lease, it's in the lease.
Facilities agreement, which is heavily redacted and they won't release, because I've been refused that document. Nobody's seen that document, if that document exists, bring it to this meeting and let's have a look at it. I've been refused that under a freedom of information.
Yeah. Yes, councillor, I think the, but this application is called a prior consent order. It's like a planning application, that's my understanding of it, so really to make things clear and not opaque, you, it needs to go to TDC and there, as you're one of the members of the planning committee, you can bring all this up, as can other people who are like councillor Pitton, can do that as well.
That's great. The prior consent order, Chair, is slightly different, my understanding is from a planning application, but the two, it's a sort of similar theme. So in terms of showing that they're, you know, being, you know, you know, they're not trying to hide anything, this is going to go to TDC planning committee whenever.
I, I will just come back at that.
And that.
Prior, prior consent, uh, prior, prior approval under G, under general permitted development rights is not allowed if the development is a schedule one development and an EIA development. That development is both schedule one and an EIA, and the only way TDC can scope it out, it's not been scoped out, because it's been scoped in, is if the Secretary of State makes a decision and it's plain and clear under the Town and Country Planning Act Environmental Impact Assessment Regulations, I think of two thousand and ten, they're quite simple to read.
Can we have Trish, councillor Austin?
Can I just, I, I, I think I proposed a motion. I'll second it, Trish.
What was it, councillor? Uh, to, uh, refer to the council's previous concerns with the addition of, um, noise concerns for neighbours and also to say that we don't understand the reference to the conveyor belt within this application.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can, can, we've got a second for that, yes? Can we vote in favour?
I don't know, everyone's waiting to speak.
Yeah.
Sorry.
What was that?
You're waiting to speak, sorry.
Something for, when it gets to TDC. I understand this is going to be part of, for stability. As such, it's on Crown Land. And I didn't see anywhere the application, but that's been.
Discussed with countryside.
Discuss, and it is being the application. It's on Crown Land. Because those are just notion, saying that, and I don't think TDC have done that.
Wait, wait, yeah, go.
So can we also note that the relevance of.
Stakeholders.
No, I wouldn't say no.
Oh, don't tell them now, we'll tell them later, yeah.
Okay, can we move to the east side of Effingham?
Oh, sorry, that, um, councillor Austin's motion was proposed and seconded, but we haven't.
Oh, we haven't voted, all those in favour? Right.
Thank you for keeping us under control.
Yeah. The abstentions or objections?
No.
Okay. So the next one is Little Fellon Street.
It's next door to the, where the electricity substation is being decommissioned. I think it may actually be quite a, a benefit to the street.
Yes, I think.
Just to have a closer look at it and see what other members thought.
Yeah, it's just used as a dumping ground.
Oh, yeah, okay.
A storage area.
Door of Kuma.
One application is for the house they propose to put there, and the other application is for the demolition of a staircase which is there in the corner. Um. And I agree with councillor Austin that it will help the street. They do very flashy drawings, don't they, Dornsey? Um. I'm not particularly keen on the elevation, but as, that may just be, anybody else got anything to say? Um, out of scale somehow with the rest.
It's not, yes.
I was a bit worried, sorry.
But on the other hand, because it's a very narrow site, it.
It is going to be able to do, try and do.
Yes, it, they can't, well, they could go up another story. Also, yeah. Also, I think the windows should be more rectangular.
Yes.
Maybe the ceiling height should be higher.
To make it a bit better with neighbouring property.
And the windows higher, and that's not a proposal, has anybody else got anything to say about this?
It would look very small space, same level as building outside of it.
Well, it's in between the substation and whatever they call that.
Substation, I don't know if the substation's going, but it's being decommissioned, isn't it?
Is it?
They're working on it at the moment.
Oh, it has been.
They've kept, as one of our technicians said, they've closed bloody Effingham Street again.
Yes. Um. What's the building next to it called? Something house. Maybe if it was the same height as that.
The one next to it.
Which is three story, yes.
I wouldn't want it to be quite as high as that.
No, especially as it's a thin sliver, really.
Maybe it's the windows, if, those windows make it more jumpy.
Rectangular windows, yes, the style of it may be.
Rectangular sash windows.
Sash windows and the, and the style more appropriate to the neighbouring.
The roof is a little bit strange, it's got two.
Exactly.
Valley gutters on it, which is a little bit peculiar. But, um. So what we, we're proposing, in principle, we welcome development.
Yes.
But we prefer to see the windows or even the fenestration more in keeping with the neighbourhood building.
Yeah.
Hmm. In that vertical siding sash windows, for example.
Hmm, yeah.
You don't know?
I don't mind.
Councillor Moore?
Uh, I may not be seeing this properly, but it looks as though it's built that way. That end is against a wall. This, this is so narrow.
Yeah.
If any, coming down either side, so in case of a fire, the only way is out is through the roof.
Yes, but I think a two story building, that is okay, as long as the window's open up.
It's, it's two inch.
All the way to that, to that.
Can we? No, on the, if we look at that elevation on the left hand side, it is, there is a fence there, that's not closed and it's not right up against the other building on the right hand side.
How, how much difference is there in it?
I don't know, I can't remember. Um, councillor Huxley?
Um, are there any other photos of it, because I can't really tell what it looks like, really.
Similarly, can we go back to the one where we're looking at the.
The real, what, photograph, through the road?
Where the road, yeah. Yes.
Well, it's not there.
So, yeah, it would, it would come out and then you would pop on the back, so you're moving that step, so it'd be like these existing ones here, just back.
Be more like an, an, an additional terrace row, really.
Yeah. There's no side window.
Must stop at the front.
I think it's.
There's no back.
No, I think so. No.
It, it, it's two inch.
Almost. Councillor Green?
That fence, looks as though it was their fence. Because it's on the right hand side of, of the wall, so that needs to go, doesn't it, from the back point of view?
The stairs at the back, do they belong to this property, or, I'm just a bit worried that if stairs were there, were they useful?
No, they, they belong to the next door property and I believe there's some agreement for them to remove them. And I believe there's some agreement for them to remove them. I'm not quite sure how that all works.
That's a big concern. We'd assume that those stairs were there for a reason.
Well, unless the landlord owns lots.
We're concerned about.
That is, the second application is to remove those stairs.
Yeah. Ask those questions.
Hmm, yeah. Councillor.
Yeah, I was just going to say, can we move to, to a, a motion that says we.
Yeah, we.
We welcome.
We welcome the infill development.
Yeah.
Um, but would prefer to see the windows more in keeping with the neighbouring.
And we have some concerns about.
Fire escape.
Escape.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nor the door. And somebody else's.
Okay. Okay. Oh, I'll second that. Um. We need to vote on that. Are there any, yeah, in favour? What was proposed, sorry, sorry. Um, that in, in principle, we support the infill development, but would like the windows.
Yes, it's changed and we're concerned about fire.
In favour? Councillor Green, are you in favour? No, you're, you're in. Okay.
You're not, councillor Moore?
No, no. No. I don't have to, do I?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just interested in knowing why. Look, what, what, what you.
The reasons I said. It's too enclosed.
Do you feel it's too enclosed?
And it, it's surrounded.
Yeah.
And there's only one way out.
Yeah. Yeah.
It, it's worth.
Yeah, so we say. Yeah.
Okay, a hundred and four.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, can we address the second application? The, the related application, zero two one two.
Which is the.
Listed building consent.
Listed building consent to remove the staircase. Um, I'm sort of assuming that. That is read, I don't know.
No comment, I think.
I did read it, but I've forgotten.
Benton on the quarry. Exists with listed building consent, it's the same application. Normally when they do that, that's why we're together, like, if you look at the one before number seven, it's got a removal for his staircase in the front. It's just a big consent.
Yeah.
So whatever you've just made is kind of replicated on the same page.
There we go. So is everybody in favour of that?
Yeah.
Anybody against that? No.
I am.
You are? Thanks. Councillor Moore, against?
It's already been turned down by T D C, hasn't it?
Has it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't see that.
The next application, the next one.
For very good reasons, and so.
Or the next one?
Sorry?
The next one, or this one?
This one.
This one, hundred and fourteen, yeah.
Oh, a hundred and fourteen, that's a bit of a dog's dinner. Um. Yeah. That's, yeah.
Five hundred and seventy.
The, the internal spaces are too small.
Yep.
They. Um, the bins are cycled. Um. They also say in the. Is something very peculiar, like, if you can think of a better way for us to do this, please tell us. So like.
Any suggestion?
Yeah, tell them to scrap it and start again. They need, they need to, um, it's a bit of a nightmare. Can we see the plans?
So basically, they've had it, they've had the proposal for six flats turned down, so they've now come back with five, basically, is that?
Well, if we look at the plans.
Yeah.
Um.
My strange.
That basement flat.
This is existing.
You're entering.
And then they're gonna put in passway to the lower ground floor.
And there's a staircase coming down in that area.
Yeah.
Which I don't think you're going to be able to get past. Yes, councillor.
So what have they done to change it from the previous application?
They've reduced the number of flats.
By one. Have you got?
Overdevelopment, plant living conditions, oh, that's what we said, amenity space.
Very small house. No. I think Ramsgate Design Forum have, have captured it. Yeah. That scheme represents overdevelopment, the basement flat has no outlook.
Yeah.
You'd have to be a hobbit to live there. The layout of other flats is poor and question whether it meets national space standards. It's recommended the existing two dwellings are re-pleaded and made habitable as, and, uh, as offered by the applicant as an option.
No, no, that's, that's good.
Yes.
So. No, when you start to look in detail at those plans, they are a bit nightmare. Especially that basement one.
Yeah, far too small, can't be seen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not even a big property. Can we just say Ramsgate Town Council endorses, get Heritage and Design Forums comment?
I'll second that, Trish.
I love this increased recreational pressure on the.
They have to say that, they have to go through.
They have to say that, but any development's gonna.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and they have to pay.
Can I propose we, we, we use the.
Yeah.
We endorse.
Yes, yes.
Endorse their comments.
Yes, can I, I'll second that, can we vote in favour or against? Yes.
An idea to get them to hand it in.
She's already seconded that.
Oh, sorry, Madam.
So, yeah. I know, I know.
I can't think where this is.
This is. At, at.
So last month we had.
We had the ones previously.
Where?
Yeah.
And it's this land, it's a landfill. So we'll be mimicking.
It's wasn't where on, is it?
Hmm.
So it's a bit highlighted in red. And basically they're gonna mimic it. You have one difference that the rest of the existing is, kind of, it's quite a bit taller than the existing one.
Oh. Oh, it is, isn't it?
So.
Well, it's one and a half storey, though.
Oh, but.
And how does it get to be one or not?
It's in the roof.
In the roof. See, right, okay, got it. Still a good question. It is a good question. And it still means that sometimes windows are way higher than neighbours' windows, it looks very nice.
Hmm.
Yes.
Um.
I miss cold weather.
It's up near Haynes Road, it's up.
Um.
Near Rosa's Farm Shop.
Yeah.
That neck of the woods.
Is that in Northwood?
Yeah.
What, is it in Northwood?
Effectively, you've got. Rosa's Farm Shop on the left-hand side and you can be on, it's that field and houses on the right.
Sterling Way. And it's just there somewhere.
Yeah, it's new.
Comes off this road, dear.
Up the next person, higher than that one, sort of support, can't they?
It comes off there, it goes down to that.
The house at the end of the street.
Yeah. Sorry, where's, am I being stupid here? Where's the second one, they're putting up? Oh, no. Direction of two. Four bedrooms, semi-detached.
No, that was the previous.
That was the previous one, so they've withdrawn one of them.
It's the next, it's the place next door.
That was about.
Oh, that was maybe, well, right, okay. Well, I don't think I have any objections to it. I think it's all a good thing.
Anything would be the increasing height.
Yeah, I'd object to the height.
I think, I don't object to anything apart from maybe, you, you know, is the. Is it overlooking? Is there, is there, are there buildings on this side that are the same height as this one? And that's the smallest one on the road, I don't know.
Yeah, but, sorry.
Yeah, yes, sorry.
Uh, place like this, that, I've been leafleting round here, I know.
Well done.
It, believe me, I earned it.
Oh, yes.
Uh, they're all slight, slightly or quite different.
All right, so.
And that's what it's like. They don't need to be exactly like the one next to it.
Yes.
Because they're all different and they're all lovely. I'd leave it.
But not leave it there again.
Stay with me next time I go.
Oh, no, give me a terrace street any day. Oh, right, these, like, those lines are where the existing.
Yeah.
Yes. Is that just the beside it?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that would be, that would be okay then. Stop my daughter. Sort of terrace. Because the last few years.
Yes.
Really feel with this, this, yeah, can't see a problem.
Absolutely.
So no comment?
No comment?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we're proposing no comment. Yeah, we're seconding, all those in favour of no comment? Okay.
I've got to sit on the board, obviously, somebody can help me out the window.
Come on, do about forty-four to forty-six High Street.
Oh, you've done that one, haven't you?
No.
Although T D C no, um, notified us about this application in late March. Um, they didn't validate the application until Friday and the paperwork wasn't uploaded until this week. Um, as such, I don't believe that you've had three clear days to consider the doc, the documents within this application. I've asked for an extension until our next planning committee meeting in May, which T D C has approved.
Okay.
Come on, we want to figure when it.
Dog's got an interest in this.
Yeah, dog. Dog, let's do it.
A paw goes up.
I haven't seen that one. First floor extension to rear elevation with new walkway together with railings to follow. Oh, no.
So.
We nearly bought this one.
Come on, we want photographs inside the house.
This is existing. And then basically they're gonna put railings across the front. And then have an extension and a walkway to the outbuilding, so it's gonna look like that.
So is it set back from the paper?
Slightly.
It's very slight.
It's often, yeah, it's got a slight bit of hours in front.
So that's why she wants railings. That's necessary to me.
The railings is in keeping, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. But Ramsgate Town Council would not have painted the fence that colour, is that the kind of thing we're looking at in terms of? Pleased to hear it. Ramsgate Town Council congratulates the applicant.
So from, um, the outbuilding, we'll be removing the asbestos sheeting and reducing the brickwork to new levels as well.
Say that again, please.
They'll remove, they'll be removing the asbestos sheeting.
Oh, right.
Into the brickwork, to a new level, whilst creating a way to the, the outbuilding.
So at the moment it's just across the courtyard.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah. No, we nearly bought this house, so I'm trying to remember. Yeah.
So, so what's gaining, I'm still not clear, so.
So what ought to be gaining is, so you've got existing here, so you should be gaining a bedroom and then insert a walkway to the.
Walkway to the?
The outbuilding.
Right.
Is that the moment it's across the courtyard?
Oh, and you're also, you're extending the upper story?
All right. Terrace area on that.
Posting out and then a balcony as well.
There's like a little, the bathroom and store at the back, which she's hoping to. He's busy like integrating it inside to try to make it.
Railings on the top of the outbuilding presumably means that they're gonna use, she's going to use the roof.
Oh, yeah, it's a sitting area.
Well, what's at the back?
The back, there's an alleyway.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alleyway and then the back garden.
Other building.
No.
Objection.
Yeah. And have we got, um, a section of the extension roof? Does it, is it flat roof or is it a pitched roof?
You mean for the first floor plan?
Yeah, section B B shows the sides. Section of the extension. Rear elevation. Oh, so it's got a double picture on it. With some little Elizabethan timber panel. I didn't see this when I was looking at the norm. And so that little triangle on the front elevation in the middle is the extension on the back. Yeah. Which you'll never really see.
No, I mean, she'd have, um, she'd have cause if she wanted to, almost, to go up to the height of the buildings either side of her, if she ever wanted to extend up, wouldn't she? As Preston, either side, she could almost do the infill, but.
Yeah.
There would, yeah, but I think there was a problem with somebody about a few doors further down, you suggested that, and then it would light block in various ways.
Right.
I mean, I think that's nice. I was, I was thinking the same thing, I worry.
No, that's the front.
I'd second councillor Green's no comment.
Yep.
Proposal.
Yes, yeah. We all got them. Um, can we vote on no comment, please? All those in favour, that's everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's it, is it?
What T D C treatment?
Yeah, it's. What is right? Strategic consultation. And if we've got any comments to make. Um, there's a. It's, it's quite a lengthy, um, consultation to fill in, but if members wanted to suggest, uh, anything overall. I would figure out how to fit it in response. Uh, so this is, um, there's a, uh, K C C is consult, consulting on their, um.
Sorry.
Tree establishment strategy.
Tree establishment. I think that's, that's what we talked about earlier about language, wasn't it? Tree establishment. Chair. We, we, we were concerned about the bin storage. Yes. Oh, I, I wait. One of the bin men who collected my recycling, was it, was it? A young person I've worked with, I was really surprised to see him. Well, I wasn't surprised to see him because he's a lovely young person.
We, um, could you just whizz through?
A worker.
Like, this is the tree establishment strategy.
So can I just make a general point? Um, it's K C C obviously, but, um, East Kent's got the lowest tree cover in Kent.
Yeah.
So this is a really good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it goes in with the biodiversity, climate change strategy. All the councils in Kent that get together, so that's there.
Councillor Green?
Yeah, just to pick up on that, um. Kent's canopy, its tree cover is seventeen percent, one of the lowest in the country. And West Kent is twenty-eight, thirty percent.
So no, it's the garden of England.
And East Kent is between four and nine percent. Thanet. Thanet is one of the lowest in East Kent. Um.
Can then the town car just briefly run through the sort of questions without us stopping in detail to fill it in? So that if anyone's got anything valid to say, we can think of a way of getting it in. So what they are asking.
Um. I don't, uh, please stop me if I'm wrong, but what I would say to say that we, we strongly agree with the ambition of extending tree. Cover by one point five million trees.
Yes, yeah.
And we strongly agree with, um, achieving this, uh, uh, achieving an average tree canopy of nineteen percent by twenty fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What they don't do, though, is dr-, is address the difference.
Yeah.
Between East and West Kent.
Have you read this?
Yes.
Right, so you, you're familiar with it.
I've always seen.
Oh, differentiation.
No differentiation and I think we should somehow find a way of making the point.
Yes.
That they need to address.
Yes.
The deficiency in East Kent.
Yes.
Good point.
Perhaps so. So therefore you could say from what councillor Green said, that they really need to put more resources into East Kent. That they, i.e. more trees. And also they don't, they mentioned at the beginning about hedges, hedge rows. Actually, in the actual body of the text, it doesn't really mention hedge rows, it just mentions trees, so hedge rows are actually, chair. They actually, um, absorb more carbon.
Yeah.
From trees, they're actually more effective and they link this land together, so, you know, for biodiversity. So that's something we could say.
Right. Uh.
Wave in your hands.
Um, yes.
Yeah, I can sort this.
The section on improving protection to trees, I think is far too thin. And what we need to see, it says work with district and borough council colleagues to improve that trees are well provided for within local plans and are properly considered, blah, blah, blah. We suffer really badly in this area from developers taking down trees, sometimes with permission, sometimes not. And then being told to put in three saplings and smack their hands afterwards. We really need something that strengthens. Uh, district councils', uh, protection for trees, particularly in areas where, uh, developers are, are putting a lot of housing. And some really strong requirements where trees are taken away. That they are replaced with decently sized trees rather than something this high. We don't seem to have that at the moment, we don't seem to have that sort of.
And we've got the bit about hedge rows.
Yeah.
That is covered in the local plan, I could be wrong, but.
It doesn't seem to happen in practice, that's, they say that this happens, but in practice it does appear that if a developer just decides to go in there with a bulldozer and take all the trees down. Then we go, oh dear, he's taken all the trees down, just slap his hand and make him put in, you know, a few whips and it's not appropriate.
Councillor Green.
I mean, I support that. The section on urban trees is weak. And as you, as you would expect with Kent, the section on rural, uh, woods, if you like, is much stronger.
Stronger, yes.
Um, it seems that everybody's seen this except me, I don't remember seeing.
Chair.
Oh.
I'm me, Pa, I'll be honest.
You haven't seen this either? I don't read my emails all the time.
You know, I didn't see it. Somebody sent me to it, sent it to me on Facebook and I think I then shared it with Green Park.
I got it because I'm on the list for KCC consultations, so I get all sorts.
Okay, so, back to where we were, do we need to? Uh, yes, councillor Green.
Just to illustrate my point about it being fully even-handed across the two areas. They're proposing to support KCC members to, to provide three hundred and fifty trees. Per member. And that's right across Kent. No differentiation at all, once again. Now, you, you might argue that that's fair, but with the, with the difference between East and West Kent being so great, I don't think that's fair to.
It should be loaded, ratio.
Yes.
Yes, loaded in every.
Yeah. East Kent and urban areas.
Of trees and the hedge rows.
Yeah.
And it don't, and it, it doesn't mention how they're going to finance that. Whether this is extra, extra money for each member or whether it's to come out of the.
Local Authority Treescape Fund and the Shared Outcomes Fund, but it doesn't say anything, it says about total amounts, but it doesn't say how that breaks back. So, Chair, the, so the strategy's broken down into a number of objectives, uh, principles. And it's action, uh, high-level actions, uh, which I'm, which you then ask whether you agree with all of those. And I'm happy to read them out if you would like. Uh, so to begin with, the objec-, the objectives are to contribute to KCC and the county's net zero targets. Reduce and reverse the decline of nature. Uh, tackle, tackle the multiple threats to our trees, deliver nature-based solutions to some of the county's challenges. Provide enhanced and improved recreation amenity, address the decline in trees outside woodland and decline in urban areas. And realise economic benefits, increase our knowledge and provide better protection.
Some of that's a bit wishy-washy, isn't it?
Um. And the, the, the questions that are asked is between strongly agree.
Yeah.
Strongly disagree, don't know. And it's type of questions that I can't picture people actually saying, no, I don't disagree, I disagree with that.
Say that, won't you?
Yeah.
I don't think it addresses the decline in urban.
No, I think it's rather like one of those government consultations where they say, do you think this is a good idea, a great idea or a bloody excellent idea? Tick the box, haven't got any space to say anything else.
Yes.
Um, and then we've got, uh, principles, again, between strongly to disagree or don't know. Uh, better management and protection of existing stock, right tree in the right place for the right reasons.
The right something or other with the right, it's, it's the right, they shove something in and then they bug up, they disappear.
And that is, councillor, councillor Austin, that's definitely in the local plan.
Yeah.
If you put in a developer chair, put in new trees in a new development, they have to maintain them.
Yes.
These three years, I think.
Yes, but KCC does not follow that about its own street trees.
It do.
All the way along.
I see. KCC's policy is not to remove these street trees.
We can say.
Um, and then we've also got deliver multiple benefits, ensure biosecurity of new tree stock through application of strict standards. Um, strategy outlines the high-level actions that KCC will take, some in partnership with others, to deliver a new tree cover in Kent. Um, deliver against the tree establishment target, exemplify provision for trees on our estate, improve protection to trees in Kent. Improve our understanding of Kent's trees, develop Kent carbon offset market for unavoidable emissions.
So we've, we've got to say that we need more than everybody else because we're very deprived in the tree region. And we've got to say that they've got to maintain the trees they do. And they've got to think about hedge rows as well. Um, even if those aren't suitable answers to any of the questions.
Well, there's quite a few boxes where we can shove some of this in.
I think it's at the end.
Yeah. Because London is deprived in every way, including trees.
Does it say how it's funded?
Well, there's a few headline amounts from different sources, but they don't break it down because it's sort of presented like an infographic almost. So they don't break down, we're gonna get this amount from there and that amount from there.
I think hedge rows are overlooked as well.
Yes, I think that's.
It's just ripped out and a lot of animals live in them, under them, in them, on them.
Commodores, too.
Exactly, yeah.
So, Chair, um, there is an argument that says that, um, carbon offsetting is cheating.
Yes.
Like academics particularly, green academics.
Because they're buying up Scotland to, um, of their private jets and things.
Yeah, exactly. So it is cheating, really.
Yes.
But.
I'm not sure we can solve that.
No, I think that's a problem, yeah.
We, um, came down from London today. And my other half, in his wisdom, decided to avoid the motorway and go through the A2. Through whatever, which took three times as long as the motorway, I think. But there were lots of lovely hedge rows and fields and everything all along there. Well looked after by presumably the landowners rather than KCC. But, um, yes.
So let me put something in question nine A. So we'd like KCC to engage with local parish and town councils. About the, the new, um, establishing trees and woodlands in their area.
Yeah. We are on their list. We can specify the kinds of things we would like them to talk to us about, I think that would be very useful.
And maximise outcomes because we can cheat more if we work together.
And there are already some initiatives going on, we're about tree planting and. Am I wrong?
Sorry.
There are already some tree planting initiatives going on.
Yes.
And trees, yes.
Yeah. Or people, anyway.
Would it help if I read out the, the different ideas that were raised?
Yeah.
Got, uh, make the point that the plan doesn't address deficiencies in, in different areas of Kent. Particularly East Than-, in Thanet. Uh, strengthen the district council's protection of trees and ensure replacement with, um, appropriate sizes.
Yeah, that's for developments.
Um, improve provision of urban trees, currently the, the strategy is weak in this area. Um, the plan doesn't address decline. KCC needs to look after, um, trees within its, its own estates, particularly roads which must be replaced. Include hedge rows and KCC to engage with town and parish councils regarding local needs to help maximise outcomes.
Yep. Yes, that sounds good. Do we need to vote on this?
Oh, I guess, please.
Yes? No?
Yes, please.
All those in favour, Laura's just read out. Okay, can town car, uh, this one? Well, she's correct. So have we got? Any other business?
You done?
I think we are, we need to date the next meeting, but isn't that set already?
No, that'll, that'll be confirmed after the annual council meeting.
Okay, that's the twenty-seventh vote.
No, I think, I've got my ever. Seventh, some, seventh of May?
Right, but it says, that's, oh, I see, uh, fourth of May, sorry.
Yeah. Oh, but actually, no, I think there is, there is a May meeting in the diary, isn't there?
Yes.